Okay, it's being at 6:30. We're going to go ahead and get started with the East Consolidated Zoning Board Meeting. And if we can, can we just start with roll call, please?
Ken Kleinsmith.
Present.
Ken Sanderson.
Present.
Kelly Ross.
Present.
Fred Winger.
Rod Richardson.
Present.
Having everyone present, we have a quorum for the board. Can we read this statement for a hybrid in-person virtual meeting, please?
This meeting is now being recorded in the board hearing room with zoning board members attending in person. There's also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom attendees wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When is your turn to speak? The moderator will recognize you by the name or phone number listed to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the city and state where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to three minutes unless the chair designates a different time period. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin speaking, and please speak into the microphones so that the people attending via Zoom can hear you, and the comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for that. The second agenda item is for us to have an election of the officers. We're actually going to defer that election. We've got two vacancies on the board that we desire to have filled prior to that. Is there any objection by anyone on the board for that? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move. We'll go ahead and defer that within agenda items review. This evening, we've got one application before the board. We're going to have two that are going to be continued that will take a motion at a later time. Any other changes to the agenda? Any conflicts of interest or external discussions regarding the first applicant?
No.
Hearing none, we'll move to approval of the minutes. I only had one comment to note in the minutes was on the last page. I think it was just a carryover. I was not present for the August 7th meeting, referencing after the adjournment, my name. I believe that should be Vice Chairman Richardson, who thanked everyone for coming out this evening. Other than that, do I have a motion for the approval of the minutes without one modification?
Kelly Ross, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, minutes are approved. Board reports, Board of County Commissioners, and the Planning Commission actions, Sean.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Sean Pendley, County Planning Staff. We will make a change to those minutes. Thanks for that catch on that. For Board of County Commissioners' actions on September 5th, the board approved conditional use permit for ESS properties for the property at 20750 Foster Court. If you recall, this was the item considered at the August meeting for the East Consolidated Zoning Board for the building addition and a vehicle wash building for Emory Sapp and Sons Contractor Yard and shop in the industrial park there at 207th and Foster. That item was approved by the board on September 5th. For Planning Commission actions, there was no meeting in September, and the next Planning Commission meeting will be on October 22nd. At that upcoming meeting, what will be on the agenda will be an update regarding our zoning and subdivision regulations update. We're getting ready to start a pretty extensive project to update our zoning and subdivision regulations. We anticipate that project to take up to two years for review and adoption. So we're looking forward to setting up an advisory committee meeting to start later this month. We'll have representatives from the Planning Commission, the two zoning boards, and other stakeholders in the county. So we're excited to get started on that and have our consultant helping us with that. So we'll have an update on that at the Planning Commission meeting, and then we expect to have an advisory committee meeting the next day on October 23rd. Also on that October 22nd Planning Commission meeting, we'll have a training session for the Planning Commission with some updated topics we'll be discussing based on the survey that we had conducted for the Planning Commission earlier this summer. That concludes board reports. Happy to answer your questions.
On the subdivision regulations, is that for just the unincorporated area? Or does that also include any of the cities?
Yes, just the unincorporated area. Our zoning and subdivision regulations only apply to the unincorporated area. However, we will be in the process through that update. We will be coordinating with the adjacent cities, our urban fringe cities. We often do communicate with them about any updated projects. And often, you know, when we have any of these land use applications, we send out as a courtesy any updates to the adjacent cities that are surrounding our unincorporated areas. So we will be communicating with them as well, but these regulations will only apply to the unincorporated area.
Great. Thank you for the update. Any other questions?
Yes, so the update will include everything. Zoning regulations, development standards, subdivision regulations. And in those development standards, that includes lighting, parking, signage, everything. We're going to be looking at everything, and we anticipate extensive updates. It's been, it was 1994 when we first adopted our current version of the zoning and subdivision regulations. Of course, we've had amendments over the years for specific things like utility scale, solar regulations, and others. We haven't looked at some of their issues such as lighting or noise regulations, or those development standards will absolutely be included in this update. So our advisory committee will be discussing those, our Planning Commission, and the board. Yes. That's a good question. The official recommending body will be the Planning Commission. So they'll formally forward a recommendation on the draft regulations to the B O C C. However, we definitely will be bringing updates to the zoning boards. We will have representatives from each of the zoning boards on our advisory committee. So in that sense, they're represented. But that's a good point, you know. Certainly, we could discuss that with Jay and our consultant as to how we can bring forward updates to the zoning boards. I think it's relevant because the zoning boards are the ones that implement these regulations, right? Through our course of our actions. Certainly, we'll be able to bring updates. As far as official commenting, you know, these are going to be public processes. So we're, in addition to our advisory committee, we're going to be having open public forums and informational meetings where we can accept comments from anyone in the county. And that can include zoning board members, of course. So yes, there's a, there'll be an opportunity to do that, but it may not actually happen at zoning board meetings. It may happen in other forums.
Sorry, Rod. They can't hear you on Zoom.
Oh, your mic is your mic.
Sorry about that. Sorry, Zoom people. I would ask in your discussions with the folks that are going to manage this to consider in what way the two zoning boards could be given an opportunity to formally comment on this. They may choose not to, other than through the individuals involved. But it kind of raises a question of how do the individuals, how do we know what the individuals that we're sending as a representative really ought to be commenting on? So I don't have an answer to that. I'm just suggesting that, given the importance of this and the fact that we're going to be handling it at this level, we should have some opportunity to know. You're not going to change every last period in that thing. It's going to be very specific changes, but we ought to at least know where the changes are coming and have an opportunity to see them, and at least indicate if nothing else, that we'd like to comment on something or have a, you know, have an issue with it. That's, it just eliminates problems such as, why did you do that afterwards, once it's adopted? Just a suggestion.
Sure. Yeah, we can absolutely have that discussion when we have our kickoff meeting with the consultant, which, yeah, we expect to start very soon here at the end of this month.
And who's the consultant?
Clarion Associates is our lead consultant, and they're based out of Denver, Colorado. They're foremost expert in land use and comprehensive planning updates. We also have Olson Studio, who's a subconsultant that will be our local contact. They have offices here in Kansas City. They'll also be helping out with that public outreach and public engagement.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and move to the business before the board this evening. Application number E24410CUPAU, a conditional use permit renewal for 18310 Plum Road. Diane, thank you for the staff report.
Thank you. Good evening. Diane Wicklen, Planning Department. So let me do full screen there on the graphics. We'll get to those in a minute. So for this application, applicant landowner is Roger Ratsliff, and the site address is 18310 Plum Road. And you can see here on the screen with the vicinity map that it's right there at the corner of Plum and 183rd Street. The existing land use is agricultural on the kind of larger parent parcel. And then the zoning on the property is the R U R Rural Zoning District. The existing improvements are the baseball field and the batting and pitching nets and a gravel parking lot area. The site size for the baseball field is about six acres, and the parent parcel is approximately 60 acres in size. So this is a request to renew an existing conditional use permit to allow the continued use of a baseball field for amateur and recreational practices and games. The baseball field has been serving elementary and high school girls and boys since 2014. And the original CUP was approved by the Board of County Commissioners in December of 2013, and that had a 10-year term on it. So for this renewal request, the applicant is not requesting any changes to the existing site or operations other than the requested removal. And that's from Johnson County Public Works Department of the existing driveway closest to the intersection. So this will be a seasonal use baseball field, kind of reoccurring every year between March through May. And the games are league scheduled play, and access to the site is from 183rd Street. All guest and spectator parking is provided off-street with a gravel parking lot. All activities will be during daylight hours only, and the existing baseball field has no lighting, but there is one security lighting on a pole that's over the storage unit, which is adjacent to the parking area, and that light fixture is downward facing and shielded. The typical hours of operation are weekdays from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. Sanitary waste disposal on the property is served by a one portable restroom on-site. There is no concession stand on the site. However, one food truck does come to the subject property on game days. And there are also some portable speakers that are provided and that are used to announce the players' names during the games for the season. Those speakers are pointed towards the bleachers and towards the field and are only used during baseball play time. Both property owner and Johnson County Planning Department are not aware of any complaints in the past 10 years regarding the baseball field activities. And the applicant has also been in continual compliance with the stipulations that were approved with the original CUP. So I'll just kind of go through some of these graphics real quick. So here's an aerial view of the subject property. It's outlined in blue. This is kind of a aerial view of the surrounding area. And I'll talk about this a little bit later, but you'll kind of see really the only thing that's changed over the last 10 years is this new subdivision here at the northeast corner of 183rd and Plum Street. And that subdivision is actually located within City Overland Park. And here's just kind of an oblique view of the baseball field in that parking lot area. Here is a copy of their site plan. Here's a close-up picture of the ball field. You can see the bleachers there and the dugout scoreboard kind of in the back there. Here's just a picture of the batting and pitching area. And then here's just another view of the ball field looking south. So those are just some graphics there to help you kind of see what the property looks like. So in terms of minimum infrastructure review, the existing infrastructure is adequate to serve the proposed existing ball field. So like I mentioned earlier, so the subject property is a corner lot accessed by 183rd Street. Plum Road is also adjacent to the subject property, but there is no driveway access to the site from Plum Road. There are currently two existing driveways connecting to 183rd Street. So, and then also just to note that the applicant did submit a traffic impact memo, and Public Works has reviewed and accepted that memo. And as a result of that traffic memo, there are no required street improvements for the proposed use. However, the county subdivision regulations, they do have a requirement, which is a minimum distance of 600 feet for driveway entrance to an intersection. And so because of this, this is why Public Works Department is requiring requiring removal of that existing driveway that's closest to the intersection. And the applicant has agreed to that request. And so after removal of that one driveway, then there'll just be one point of access on 183rd Street. And then in addition, they'll have to widen that entrance to accommodate two-way traffic. The applicant also submitted a site distance analysis for that remaining western entrance. And the Public Works did review and accept that that site distance study, and it showed no site distance issues with the driveway. Just in terms of the golden criteria, kind of a quick summary of that. So just to note, the nearest existing house is about 415 feet away in that new subdivision that I pointed out. Second closest home is about a little short of 800 feet to the east across Plum Road. So that the use continues to be consistent, you know, with the nearby residential uses, given the distance from the subject property and its kind of low intensity use. The neighborhood continues to have a predominantly agricultural character with large lot residential uses. Again, as I mentioned earlier, this has not changed over the last 10 years, except for that new subdivision that I pointed out to you. And so really, because of that, the impacts of this existing very limited activity to the surrounding area is very minimal, if any, and continues to be consistent and compatible with the neighborhood. Again, have no, not received any complaints. And then because, again, of its limited use about generally three months out of the year, except I think individual players can come and use the ball field kind of off-site for individual practice. And also because it's, there's no outdoor field lighting, and there's just daylight use hours of it, that continues to have no detrimental effects to nearby parcels. In regard to the rural comprehensive plan, so this property is designated and shown as being in the rural policy area. And just to note that the rural comprehensive plan does not specifically address, you know, conditional use permits, but the zoning regulations do allow for athletic field uses if a CUP is granted. So you'll see in the back of your packet, there's a memo from Public Works Department. The Environmental Department stated no concerns or issues with the application. And so therefore, planning staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit renewal, given the recommended stipulations on page 12. And I'll just point out that right now, the term that's being recommended is 10 years, which is what it was the last time. And up to, you'll see on stipulation up three, it's up to a maximum of 15 games per season, per year. And then stipulations seven and eight are in regard to removal of that entrance and widening the other one that I talked about before. And so with that, the reasons for recommendation of approval are on page 12 and 13. And then also there's recommended motion. And I can pull that up on the screen when the board's ready for that. And I think at this point, I can stop asking any questions, and applicant's also present.
Any questions for the staff from the zoning board?
Mr. Chairman, Rod Richardson. On page 12, item two there, I just want a clarification. They want 10 years. And you say the term of the conditional use permit shall be for a period not to exceed 10 years. Are you, on behalf of the staff, recommending a 10-year CUP? You have no objection to that?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions of the staff? Hearing none, would the applicant like to say anything? I understand they're here. All right. Any questions of the applicant by the zoning board?
No.
Hearing none, is there any one signed up for public comment? Having no one signed up for public comment or on Zoom for public comment, we'll go ahead and close the public comment section. Any further questions of zoning board staff comments?
This is Kelly Ross. I feel like this has been part of the community for a long time. They've kept it well. It's never been a problem. So I have no problem passing it with the stipulations. And just to be consistent for thought for the county commissioners or whatever, since I've been against the baseball fields and soccer complexes and still well, reason I'm fine with this is because this has been a mainstay in the community, and people are moving out that way and building houses, so they already know it's there. It's not a surprise later. So that's my rationale for that. And plus, the intensity of use is quite different than what we've experienced with the intensity of uses of the other ones. So just want to make sure everybody knows where I'm coming from. I'm fully supportive of this one. Thank you.
This is Ken. I agree. I'm supportive of it. There's no lights, the sound, the hours of operation are during the daytime. It's been in existence with no complaints that the applicant nor the staff have. I'd be supportive of it. In fact, it's even losing a driveway that kind of makes sense. So I'd be supportive of it from the same reasons.
Ken Sanderson, you know, you're getting old when you see things come back 10 years later. I was here when I first saw it. So it's been a good improvement for the area. And I'm all about baseball for children, and it's there, and everybody knows it's there, and it serves a good need for the community.
Mr. Chairman, Rod Richardson, I just joined in all of those comments. I live south of 199th. I go up and down, but almost at Plum, and I go up and down there. And I always enjoy looking at the facility. It's well-kept. Always kind of reminds me of Field of Dreams in the corridor. I mean, it really, it really is an asset to that area. I do realize that the subdivisions are coming in. They're getting closer. I've lived out there, south of Plum, between Plum and Lake for about 36 years, and you can see the subdivisions beginning to come in. I think it's important that, I guess you'd always consider this kind of a holding use because someday, I suppose it'll be something else. But to the extent that we get encroaching subdivisions at some point, I think that even the staff or someone noted that this was there first. So, and there's no lighting. And so it's a, it's a very, very nice facility, and I'm glad to see it's going to be continued for a while. And I certainly have no objection to the 10-year permit. However, I do have a question totally unrelated to your use, which I fully support, but it goes to the issue I mentioned about looking at lights. Because, you know, this to me, and I think this is a point I would like the county commissioners to hear, and that is, here we have, you know, and I'd like the staff's comment on this as to kind of how you deal with this, because here, it's very clear in the staff report, and I totally agree with you. It's a, it's a minor intensity use, principally because there are no exterior field lighting. One of the steps is there be no exterior field lighting. The nearest houses are coming in at 415 feet away. And I'm thinking about these comments about the importance of maintaining, you know, control over lighting in this area versus the soccer stadium or the soccer fields, which had 70-foot light standards, and the houses were not that much further away, I don't think. And I think that's why I say, I really think that the Planning Commission and all of you expert planners and your consultants really need to be looking very hard as these, the sports facilities come up about how these regulations need to really look at the impact on adjoining residential areas with these, with these types of fields. This one is a non-issue because it's not there. But I can almost bet if this gentleman that wanted to do is asking for 70-foot light standards and lighting it up like Royal Stadium, we'd have 50 people here from the adjoining subdivision saying, whoa, wait a minute. So I think we need to look at that. Certainly, nothing about this application, but I couldn't help be struck by the irony of some of the staff comments about, you know, why it's low impact because there's no lighting, et cetera, versus some of the comments that didn't really take too much issue with the soccer stadium. That's just a, that's your professional opinion, and that's fine. I just think we need clarification. That's one of the reasons I think we should have the right to at least have some comment on how these are done because it makes a difference when people come in here and say, hey, wait a minute. This is the country. I don't want to see these massive light standards out there. It's changing the whole character of the area. I think we need something in the regs, quite candidly, and this is a point directly to the county commissioners, that keeps the county commissioners from too blithely just saying, well, you know, soccer is a wonderful thing, and we need soccer for the community, and, you know, we're just really not going to look too hard at these impacts. And I think part of the reason they do that is the regs aren't tight enough on how that works. So that's just my opinion as a resident out there. But I think that's, that's something that they ought to consider, and your consultants ought to consider, and we ought to have the right to comment on, particularly since we're kind of the ones that are impacted when the people come in here and say, hey, this is not, not good for us. That's my only comment. I strongly support this one and absolutely think it's a great use, so no problem with me.
Yeah, this is Kelly Ross. I agree with everything Rod said, and I think it comes down to consistency and transparency. And we have to be consistent, and I've been on this board not that long, and I've not seen consistency with stuff, and it's really frustrating. And I can't even imagine how it is more frustrating for residents. So everything Rod said will lead to a certain consistency and transparency for people. And we, I think that's probably something we owe, being board members and making these decisions. We owe that to the residents so that they don't feel like they're obsolete.
Do we have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, Fred Winger. I move the board recommend approval of application number E24-410CUP, a conditional use permit renewal to allow the continued use of a baseball field for amateur and recreational practices and games located at 18310 Plum Road. The reasons and subject stipulations recommended by staff and set forth in the staff report.
We have a second?
Second, Ken Sanderson.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no one opposed, the application is approved to move forward to the County Commissioners. And Sean, when will that get presented? Or Diane?
Yeah, Diane Wicklund. And so this application will go to the Board of County Commissioners on October 31st. 111 South Cherry here in the administration billing at 9:30 a.m. and here in this room.
Thank you. Other business before the board, we have two applicants, application number E24414PP, which is also including E24412FP, the preliminary and final platine near Metcalf, as well as application number E24415PDP and E24413FDP, a preliminary and final development plan, both of which the applicant is requesting to continue. In each case, the applicant is requesting to continue until the November 6th board meeting. Do we have a motion to go ahead and continue those?
So moved.
Second?
Kelly Raff's second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearing no one opposed, we'll go ahead and continue that to the November 6th meeting for, in both instances. Any other business before the board this evening? Hearing none, can we get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second, Richardson.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you.
Now that we're off the record, it's official, the Royals are one, two to one and going on to New York to take care of the Yankees.
All right.